Chief, my order.
Are you recording?
Yes.
Alright, we're recording.
We're calling meeting to order at six oh three. We have a group of students who pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. All council members are present. There is nothing to report on this session. Anyone have any comments or questions today? Seeing none, any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes.
Movement of public comments. Any person wishing to speak in person on items not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. We are going to take D out of order. The student A is on report. Our student A alone has a handler which shifts these next. Please go ahead and go.
Mr. Mayor, please come on board. It has been an exciting few weeks for the Cloverdale Unified School District. With Valentine's Day and the Siders Fair just around the corner, these schools packed with fun activities. Yesterday morning and this morning, the elementary school students got to enjoy a special tour of the Siders Fair, where they learned how the booth displays are made and also got to see their beautiful art displayed in the corner hall. At the end, they were all given an orange to enjoy and a free ticket to the fair. In celebration of Valentine's Day, the middle school on February seventh had their Valentine's Day dance for all seventh and eighth graders to attend. They were also given the opportunity to buy unlimited body bracelets for the Siders Fair early at a discounted price. Also in celebration of Valentine's Day, the high school ASV club has provided students with the opportunity to send candy crumbs to friends. For a small price, students can send a tree along with no to whoever they like. Many other clubs on campus such as Interact, Geek Club, and FFA are helping the Siders Fair this year as well. Interact Club is making a huge play. A painted stage featuring many bands you may remember, such as Metallica, Guns N' Roses, and The Cure, is the name of the club. The FFA made a beautiful artwork featuring flowers from each letter of the alphabet and Geek Club will be making two of walking in the parade. Also, no school Thursday, Friday, or Monday, so we can all go to the Siders Fair. Can't wait. And that concludes our day. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Diego. Anyone have any comments or questions? Great, that was amazing. Thank you so much and happy your time tonight. Alright, we'll go back to C. Proclamation. First proclamation is for C one, Black History Month. Does my words agree?
A proclamation of the city council and the city of Cloverdale for third February two thousand twenty-five Black History Month in Cloverdale. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in nineteen twenty-six of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of American Life and History, an organization dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by Black Americans and other peoples of African descent. And whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and History sponsored a National Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six, choosing the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. That then inspired schools and communities nationwide to organize local celebrations, establish history clubs, and host performances and lectures becoming a month-long celebration in nineteen seventy-six. And whereas Black History Month honors the contributions of Black Americans to U.S. history, including Madam C. J. Walker, who was the first U.S. woman to become a self-made millionaire; George Washington Carver, who derived nearly three hundred products from the peanut; Rosa Parks, who sparked the Montgomery Bus Flight boycott and galvanized the civil rights movement; and Shirley Chisen, the first Black American woman elected to the U.S. House of Representatives. And whereas the service of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. Whereas the city of Cloverdale continues to work toward becoming an equipped and inclusive community in which all of citizens, past, present, future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community. And whereas the city of Cloverdale is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now therefore, the proclaim that I, Todd Land, still hereby declare February two thousand twenty-five as Black History Month in Cloverdale and encourages all citizens to recognize, celebrate, and honor the rich and diverse contributions by Black Americans to Cloverdale. Day of February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, so ordered, Todd Land, as mayor.
Do you have any comments in the audience? Thank you for reading that. Okay, we'll move on to C two. Employee recognition certificates of appreciation. We have three tonight, all from the Cloverdale Police Department. I will read through these and then hopefully again we can get some comments from you guys and some pictures. The first one I have here is a certificate of appreciation for Sal Maruso. During his four-year tenure, retired Sergeant Sal Maruso, who retired in November twenty twenty-four, effectively managed four hundred and fifteen incidents. These incidents comprised one hundred and ninety-nine officer-initiated actions and seventy-nine traffic stops and more. His committed efforts led to twenty arrests consisting of thirteen misdemeanors and seven felonies. He also issued forty-one citations, with the majority, thirty of them, being traffic-related. Understoring his focus on road safety. Additionally, he played a pivotal role in launching a cold case homicide investigation, which resulted in an arrest and brought long-awaited closure to a family that had been seeking it for over forty-two years. His dedication and contributions to the Cloverdale community and Cloverdale Police Department are greatly appreciated. Chief?
Mr. Maruso, thank you for your service and really appreciate it. I do have a plaque here for you, so I have a CD. And then, great, congratulations on your retirement, Sergeant Sal Maruso. Thank you for your loyalty, dedication, and service to the Cloverdale, to CPD and the Cloverdale community. Deep gratitude to the steadfast commitment to the Cloverdale community and invaluable contributions in solving a cold case homicide. May your retirement be as impactful and rewarding as your service. And he has, he comes from the sheriff's office by way of Santa Rosa PD. I remember I approached him, I saw him at the gas station. Hey, you know the sergeant's phone number. So he came on board and his contributions is just valuable to us. Thank you for all you've done in such a short time. Our door is always open. I will be sending all of you a letter, kind of stuff for you and for all retirees. We will have an election for you. And then, obviously, you work with the governor and your, and so we have been throughout the year. Again, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Alright, any comments? I did want to say something. I was lighting up the cell at the sheriff's office. And his four hundred and fifteen incidents, that was a normal Saturday night, so I'm back for the day. So I don't know why you're slacking here, Cloverdale. So thank you for everything. Next, certificate of appreciation for Rudy Segubiano. Rudy Segubiano has honorably completed twenty-two years of service and retired in November of twenty twenty-four. During his career, he managed thirteen thousand nine hundred and five incidents, including responding to eight thousand four hundred and seventy-two calls for service and conducting five thousand four hundred and thirty-three officer-initiated activities, such as fourteen hundred and ten traffic stops. He handled sixteen hundred and four cases and he made a total of three hundred and twenty-two arrests, comprising two hundred and fifty misdemeanors and seventy-two felonies. Additionally, he issued seven hundred and eighty-eight citations across criminal, parking, and traffic categories. Sergeant Segubiano consistently went above and beyond, providing unwavering support and attention to the staff and administration. So thank you, Sergeant. Chief?
Again, well, you know, every time we had an event, Rudy always, you didn't say anything about it. You didn't say anything about it. You know, I love him for his enthusiasm. He's always someone you can count on. I know him personally. I remember the first time I met him or contacted him about making a police officer here, I saw him standing in a corner at the Siders Fair and talking to me. He was retiring and yeah, came onto the ride along. Of course, I had to remind you, he went to a D V call. I mean, aren't you supposed to, he left. Aren't you supposed to leave them something? It's supposed to. So we need to learn throughout our life, right? So anyways, I really enjoy his friendship and his service to us, to the community. He was always someone you could count on. And I wish you the best with whatever you decide to do with your camper. He liked to overland things, which he liked to do. I understand it. But again, thank you, I appreciate it, and you like that.
Rudy Segubiano also came from the sheriff's office, so thank you for your time. Third, certificate of appreciation. Certificate probably awarded to Teresa Higery. Teresa Higery dedicated twenty-two years of her career to serving as a community service officer before her retirement. Throughout her tenure, she managed an impressive array of responsibilities, responding to seven thousand one hundred and twenty-seven calls for service and initiating two thousand and forty-five incidents, with a total of nine thousand one hundred and seventy-two incidents documented. Additionally, she successfully handled seven hundred and fifty-three cases in her role as a CSO. While statistics illustrate her extensive contributions, they cannot fully capture the significance of CSO Higery's role within our organization. Her involvement spanned all facets of the department, community, policing initiatives, and her wealth of institutional knowledge is highly valued across the city. So thank you, Teresa, for your time here.
Yeah, so Teresa, pay attention. You know, I appreciate you and all the service. Every time I come to you, you know, you can do everything. You know, the AC, but it's not there, it's over here. They did this for this reason, not over there. It's like, fuck it, I didn't know this. But you know, you never said no. Sometimes you said, I can't do it, and you went off and did it. But I know you can do it. I always believed in you. I will always believe in you. And I wish you the best.
So Teresa, one more question. My one question is, how many of these incidents that you initiated were them calling calls on you? We know how that works for a while. I mean, you never hear that. Anyone else say anything? Please, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Sal, Rudy, and Teresa, I just want to say thank you. It's a difficult job you have. I know we never say, say often enough, but we really do appreciate what you've done for the city over the twenty-two years that you've had servicing here. So good luck with your retirement and hopefully we'll see you around town. Thank you.
Alright, do you guys want to take a photo? Thank you.
Yeah, I got a picture of that.
I got to finish and take a photo.
Alright, one, two, three. Oh yeah, hold the hook up. One, two, three. Alright, there you go, Scott.
One second, one second.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Oh, you have your jersey.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Alright, we'll keep moving on to F, the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar may be considered together by one action of the city council, unless any council member or member of the public requests that item be removed and considered separately. I know Vice Mayor wants to pull F two. Anyone else want to? There's only one other, so what do we want to do? Alright, we'll start with, since we have the, can I have a motion, right?
Mr. Mayor, do we approve the consent calendar of five minute?
Thank you.
A second.
Right. With that, we can do a voice vote. All favors say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Perfect. Okay, F two. It's considered a resolution approving the budget amendment for the transfer of impact fee to be used for the purchase of a new CAT two couldn't by a trap skid steer, flail mower, and asphalt planer for use by the city of Cloverdale Public Works Department and authorizing the city manager to sign the purchase agreements. So Kevin, do you want to talk about it at all, or Derek? And then we can, sorry. Derek, I think you can.
Yeah, I can speak for the item. So it's to replace our aging logcat, the one I need. And with our existing flail mowers, it doesn't fit on any of the machines. Right, and then for the purchase of the flail mower, it's good for this machine. And we, we originally put it in last year's budget as a complete wastewater sewer impact fee budget item. And then we went back and reviewed it and with the mower attachment and the usage, decided it's going to be used by multiple parts. So we wanted to make sure we memorialize that and purchase with that. So when it's, when it's out being used, we're going to use up these parts. When you're ready, asphalt, and also, you know. And then with the machine, we purchased, there's a machine operator training. Uh, please that back. The machine comes shipped with one of these machine operator trainings. Training is for, for our training of security. We have more staff doing it, involves that pretty much. We debate in that additional staff members purchase, which comes to a certain level of our rate. The U.S. Tractor also offers three, three months, we get it in advance of the, each one's a three-day course. And after we do the original order, the training will be going to a little bit, possibly employing these three courses in a, in a, twice an update. We can even have, have the personnel working on, but machines, you know. Different work we have, who's going to be working here in the other days here.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. That was my big concern right there. And you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna harp on qualifications and all the machines and everything we have in the city, because I know how dangerous those things can be. To answer my question right there, since you got Pearson Cat on board and they're coming to do the training, I think also it'll help too. And I'd like to see that be mandatory for anybody that may use that thing. Then we can track qualifications on the same day. I mean, or within, whenever the, the training gets offered, we can track them and then monitor them a little bit better. I just want to see the calls lapse and have that turn into a lag related in the city. Because I know those things are very dangerous, I run them myself. And they got a, it's not a hardcore train, but there's technology needs to be. I think the best part about that training itself is not running the machine itself, it's actually the pre and post checkoff on those machines. It links and links the life of those machines for that, if they follow. So yeah, happy to hear that. That was going to be a question, so I wanted to make sure we have qualified votes for a minute. And thank you very much.
You ask, and you press a button.
Just one question, Kevin. Pretending to the funds that we're using to purchase this, like for our impact fees?
Correct, half sure and half water.
And it's appropriately marked, I guess, which is coming out of which.
Yes, in the budget exhibit form attached to the report specifies that they now have. Derek, you said that this is a replacement, one we already have?
Yeah, this is sort of a replacement for existing ones. In the shop quite a bit and the flail mower is kind of failing. And with the addition of things like open spaces and stuff, we're going to see that existing mower kind of be out of the yard more often than not. And so, back looking at this move and kind of updating the elements and making stability to a bright asphalt, you know, quickly. If this is, 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 is.
Thank you.
I imagine, Kevin, we got three bids for pricing.
We went through, we've gone through what they call source well. The source well, it, it, it holds the market and it satisfies, satisfies on three bid. It gives us that low as a bid.
So if we put that being said, if you procure it, but then the maintenance on it, is the maintenance going to take place in our yard? Or is it going to be, have to be shipped out to your, we take some, we have to be.
It depends, they have like the ninety day and the one year warranty. Or more, more, but Peterson does have a little camp. We're also in contract with a little mobile camp. We're, if it's things like, you know, large implements or a, you know, structural back things, we ship it back to Peterson and they fix it on right there. Or they, they bring it to them, it's like a structural well thing, a large replacement. Because we don't want that happening at all, we're taking it. For, for normal maintenance stuff, it would happen and help.
Followed up to color, does anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, or concerns? You can press a button. Seeing none, we'll bring back the motion. Will we approve that by Vice Mayor?
Second.
By Ms. Martha Walter, do a voice vote on this. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Being opposed, per se, nothing. Perfect, motion passes five to zero. Move on to H new business. H one, consider the procurement of new MDTs, mobile data terminals to replace old terminals and supply new ones for newly purchased vehicles. It's not very clear here, it's a lot of these vehicles. Kevin, do you want to talk about this, or is it Chief? Chief?
Yeah, so the agenda before you, Mayor. Agenda before you is for, to replace five old MDTs, one of them appears. Over the past four years or so, we've been replacing them as we go. This is the final batch to get replaced. And we did that because they're expensive and we just don't have a lot of money to do all MDTs at once. And the MDTs are used inside the vehicles for responding to calls, to get the information, the chat information on the, on the screen. And kind of give them, when they're going to the call, it'll show what, what actually the call is, who called, the information, who are involved. They also use the MDTs for outside vehicles, for Zoom courts. And sometimes the hot court, Zoom, they take their laptop out of the car and they do Zoomings. They also take it to training, do search warrants and stuff on the MDTs and those are the ports. So again, this is, this is just a replacement for the five old, four MDTs that we're replacing. CF thirty ones, they're at, our CF thirty one, and it's on Tuff Pugs. The version that they're at now for Tuff Pugs is fifty-five. So they're made back in twenty twelve, they're thirteen years old. And they're, they're failing, so we kind of, kind of had to get some, you know, move the old ones around, the mouse, some mouse, the mousepad's no more. Some of the touchscreens no more. So, you know, we, we, so this is just replacing those. The funds being used are for remaining balance for the supposed, see the impact fees, that account, we're supposed to draw that account down to zero. And eleven thousand is going to add about seven hundred and eighty-one. And then our remaining balance is coming out of, of the vehicle.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Around council, any questions?
Just one question, Chief, is what is the lifespan of these?
Microphones, please.
For this, I guess. My question was, what is the usable lifespan before they're considered obsolete based on technology? You said the old, both other ones were at least thirteen years?
Yeah. Yeah, and today's technology, once you buy computers, twenty the next day, really. So thirteen years, I, I, I bought a new MDT, oh, about four years ago, I mean. It won't upgrade to, not saying these are, it's just the way technology is. I, we try and expand that lifespan of all of our equipment, just because we, you know, we can't replace it very, we don't have a very, very impressive fund for those things. It just depends on the equipment, really. The use, they use it every day. The calibration's on, the touchscreens, sometimes you can't use touchscreen on some of them. There are certain things that go on, we'll, we make new and, that's just what I was saying. But I get, I get your definition.
Chief, I just want to make sure that these are already approved in the budget, right?
They're, they're, no, they're, they're just for impact fees, they're not impact fees.
Okay, but were they approved in the budget, or is this a budget adjustment?
It's a budget adjustment, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, well, motion public, anyone have any questions, comments? Seeing none, anyone like to take a motion by title only?
Motion to adopt and read by title only. Resolution, titled resolution authorizing the purchase of new mobile data terminals and MDTs for the Cloverdale Police Department patrol vehicles and authorizing city manager to sign purchase.
Right, second. Turning my phones off. Thank you. Alright, go first in the segments. Do we have, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, perfect. Motion passes five to zero. Move on to H two, the city council vacancy. Number two, about, I mean, alright.
Thank you, Eric, in the evening, council. Adams, I'm sure you're all aware, council member Walter has announced that he is going to be resigning from the council at the end of the month after more than twenty-three years, I think, service gone on, on the city council. Very exceptional period of time to give to the community. But that means there's going to be a vacancy in the council. We'll need to decide what to do with that basically by the end of April. Within sixty days of February twenty eighth. So the council has two options. We can call a special election. We don't have the exact estimated cost of that, but it's likely to be. We don't have the exact estimated cost of that, but it's likely to be at least twenty thousand dollars. An election will happen in November of twenty twenty-eight. But there's unlikely to be anything else within Cloverdale on that ballot. And so we're going to have to shoulder a lot of those costs by ourselves in a way that normally during the normal general elections, you know, the councils are already putting on elections. So we're only paying sort of incremental costs. The council can also make an appointment. There are no rules about the process for what an appointment can be, as long as the process complies with the ground plan. So the council can make an appointment tonight, they can decide to approve for a candidate, have interviews, whatever process we want. I should just say that in order to serve on the city council, you have to be registered Cloverdale in this. So with that, we are just looking for your direction on how you go.
Everyone understand the options? We're running the city, think first. Councilman Lasky?
I would like to.
It's okay. We'll all look through this.
I would just put it out on the floor that the next person, you and Andres, that was runner up to the voting tally, be nominated for the council versus somebody who's may or may not pick the nomination. That would be my recommendation.
So just so I understand, you would want to nominate someone outright and a person outright and not have any?
Yeah, I would nominate someone outright. I wouldn't go through a kind of a special election. And I believe there's a citizen that was willing to step up and showed his vitality to step up. And I would go back out of the morning, somebody who's ready to step into justice position.
Councilman, more is there?
I definitely don't think we need a special election. And I, I sort of go and hear from the public, but, you know, let the public come and try to figure out what's going on.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm really sad that I have to leave the city council. But unfortunately, it's a decision that my family and I came to make. And I am not going to get to vote for anyone to replace P. G. on the dais, but I can give you my input. And my input is not to have a special election and not to go through the, through the individuals that want to sit doing an interview in the city council. And I think that just becomes a popularity contest. I know there was a third runner up in the last election. And I have to say, I just feel that twenty-three years on the dais cannot be replaced with a ninety or sixty day campaign. There are capable individuals in this community, former council members, who are willing to step up to the plate and to take on responsibilities. One in particular is tied in already to the county. He was a former member of the, of the Sacramento League of Cities, thank you. And Martin Malaporte, this is an important decision. You know, we just received a vote of confidence from Cloverdale that they entrusted us with D. D. on three orders of a cent of sales tax. It's going to bring in to our caucus about one point five million a year. This money is going to be a washover of experience. Promised community, the citizens, the general bodies of operations, the streets, the parts and reps and community services. We need somebody who can shed that. So I recommend that we, I'm getting written in, but I just recommended that we select somebody who has experience, has contacts in the county, in the state. You know, we have a council member that started running last year. He's the one who's qualified. We have another council member who's rep, he's the one who's qualified. We just need somebody who's qualified. To take advantage of the one who nominated the city council.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Special election now. I don't think a special election needs to go down. And I think we do have, like Councilmember Walter said, there is a pile of people that are qualified to do this job. As far as watching the D. D. money, absolutely we need some experience up here. But my only thought process on that is, yeah, these guys have experience, but how can you get experience unless there is somebody that comes up here and asks this? You know what I mean? I didn't have experience two years later, I'm gaining experience. And that goes along with everybody that's sitting up here. You have the mayor here who has quite a bit of experience, has been the city mayor and does a phenomenal job up here at the dais through it. That's kind of the job of the mayor, to watch out for, for the new council members. Give them the lingo, give them the way meetings run, and that's how you learn this stuff. My thought process on this, like I said, no special election. We do have people that are qualified, people that have done this and people that have connections. But I keep falling back to, how are you going to get those unless you jump in here and do it yourself? I commend Andres here for stepping up. He went through the process. We all know what a rigorous process that is. How stressful that can be to sit in front of a forum and hope you have an answer for somebody and hope you can satisfy somebody, which you never will. And then fully knowing it's going to blow up on Facebook the next day and you're going to be that guy. You know what I mean? So anyway, Andres, thank you for stepping up. Thank you for going through the process. And like I said, I'm hanging, I think you went through the process and I think you may be a good proceeding counsel to say that. So, thank you.
So make sure, Andres, you want the interview process?
I do know.
You want to appoint one person, you want to choose one person, pick a name?
So, I, this is my fourteen fifteenth year, I'm going to be able to work as a school board here. I was appointed to start on the school board and we did not do the interview process. I was the one that was chosen, just out of the crowd basically. And that's how we got started. But I've also been through probably half a dozen appointments. And through those, we've always done interview processes and I'll tell you why. Beyond the idea of experience or knowledge, it's open to the entire community and public again because what if someone changed their mind in August and wanted to run now or the next time? This is their opportunity and I think that everyone should always have that opportunity when there is an opening if possible. I don't think it's fair, even though I, I understand the idea of just picking one person, I think that's great, especially someone that's already put in time and effort for a campaign, completely understand. However, I think that for fair and free elections, it should be open to everyone, put their name in the hat, it's used to. And that's my feeling on that. So I've noticed, I am, by myself at this point, we have three people, two people want to appoint outright, one of them wants to hear the vote.
Well, I want to hear the comment.
We will, we will. We'll say, we're understanding where we're at this point. It's looks like a three to one to one type of deal here. But I'm just kind of letting you guys know what I'm seeing on my paper. And now we'll open up to public, no one else wants to go on here? Anyone else first? You're going to the public now, you guys ready? I'm going to open up to public and see what happens. Just a word, tell us your name.
Thank you. My name is Molly Fisher and I'm the co-chair of the Cloverdale Democratic Club. And we sent out a letter to the community on our website and we social communicated asking for, it was a petition, and asking her people to support appointing Andres. And I was initially hoping to get twelve signatures. And by the time I submitted the letter to the city council, we have fifty. And now, because it just kept going, we have sixty. So there are a lot of people who'd like to see Andres appointed. And I don't think you have to go through the interview process. Now, speaking personally, not for the public, but just from Molly Fisher, you knew that you were going to resign. I wish you had left it to the voters at that moment. Could have saved us a lot of money and a lot of party. Thank you.
Well, Molly, thank you for keeping the contract on my, on my thoughts of resigning. And I can assure you that was not my intent or outside of what I've done. So if you need to finish your backstroke before you start signing, I believe this one is, I think.
Anyone else in the public who'd like to make comments?
Hello, city council. My name is Andres Marquez. Thank you, Mayor Lance, Vice Mayor Wheeler, Councilmember Lordster, Councilmember Lasky, and Councilmember Gus Walter. I'd like to thank you in particular for making the time to meet with me during the months leading up to the election, sharing your experience as a Cloverdale city council member and also as mayor. I wish you all the best. Would you move back easy? In Cloverdale, I think it's clear we have a mix of viewpoints and political affiliations. However, overall feels like we live in harmony and prefer to focus more on building community instead of differences. The voters of Cloverdale passed their votes in November, and I ask that you consider this as you move towards an application process if you took so choosing. What is the city council truly looking to evaluate in an application process that hasn't already been requested by the community in November? The runner up is a position that requires votes and support, which I ask that you place some value in. Everyone on the city council started somewhere. And I ask that the city council ask themselves, what is the purpose of an application process when the people have already spoken? Thank you all. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts with you. Thank you, Andres.
Does anyone else in the public that might make comments?
Good evening. My name is James Virginia Walker. I was the runner up against Gus and Marjorie two years ago. I support Andres for the job. Out of everything, out of everything that I've heard, I think he's the best option ever voted for. You know, I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
Hi, I'm the one who's recognized and qualified because I'm Andres's wife. But, and I'm a salesperson by trade, so just bear with me, I'm going to probably sell you on this. But really, I just want to say, you know, one of the things, or the benefits of choosing Andres would be that it's really a move towards kind of acknowledging with the diversity that you could have by having someone like him join. That could be pretty cool, especially when you think of our town. And, you know, that's an opportunity for you all. And another opportunity is, you know, as we think of succession planning, you know, and folks getting to a certain point or age in their career, having someone come in and join and start to learn could be good as opposed to continuously maybe bringing in folks who we might feel have a lot of experience and letting people gain experience. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Davis. I just want to keep this real simple. Have you heard of the word democracy? That's been flying around in front of this day. He was voted, Andres was voted, and could have been positioned on the city council. So take those votes seriously. Take those into account. The people have spoken. Thank you.
Good evening, city council and everyone sitting on the dais this evening. I would like to take one step back because it went by so fast, I didn't have a chance to get up and speak on it. But I just want to say that I appreciated the proclamation which recognizes Black History Month in Cloverdale. It feels that it was offered to the community in good faith and I would like to recognize and receive it in that light.
Thank you. I love that. Thank you very much.
Second of all, I also feel that the voters in Cloverdale have spoken. Andres came up in third place behind the top two vote getters. And the idea that we would have a second election or do more interviews after the people have already spoken, it makes me feel as though the democratic process is not being recognized and followed. So I think that it takes a lot of courage to run for office, especially in the city where there are so many people who have a lot of experience and have been serving for a long time, such as Gus. And I just want to say, Gus, I really appreciate all the time and energy and years. I've been here for sixteen years and you were making decisions for a lot of that time. I want to say I appreciate all that you've done. But I have also been in the position of coming in and having to be the first one, the newbie on the block. And I think that since Andres and Mary have come to this town and fully given it all to mine being a part of it, I think that this is the next step for him to really join the city council and be able to give the rest of what he can offer to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question for you really quick, if you don't mind. February twenty-sixth, are you going to attend that meeting?
Is that a meeting?
The reason, that's our next council meeting. The reason I ask, I will print a copy of the proclamation for you.
Okay.
That's okay. I love that.
I will be there.
Thank you so much. Can we pre-read it if you don't mind? I think we've heard from the entire audience, unless you two, I know you're at Adam's desk, so.
Oh, I have my opinion always. No simple election, save your money.
All right, bring it back to the dais.
I think Shirley did the interview process, but I really don't think it's fair because in my mind, if those people weren't here on some council, they could have run with Andres's brand. And Andres did run, he got a lot of votes. He's very popular and he should be. He's highly intelligent. He's done all kinds of volunteer work in the community, the minute he arrived here. So I'd be fine with choosing Andres this evening.
So let me go with the Dallas force and Alex and Ron, please stop. We aren't allowed to do it tonight. However, we can on the twenty-sixth and make it effective on the first of March. With the way it looks like we're going as a council, the appointment process is something that we would do basically like we're doing now. Talk about appoint somebody, big motion, second. The difference with this process is anyone has the ability to step up and say, I want to be appointed to council. And so you don't have that ability to interview. And that's why I like the other way. So you could have fifteen people if you show up and they have just much rage with Andres and you bring that out there. That's why I like the way, I'm okay with it. Just be prepared that you might have other people that want to come here and, and put their name in the hat in person for that three minutes they have to speak.
So Mayor, we did it on the agenda, stay at that appointment, could be made tonight? So if that's what the?
Because under the agenda report, it said, yeah. Under the agenda report, it says, oh, I'm sorry, if you do not choose to, you're going to be early as the twenty-sixth.
So we didn't recommend the council, I'm not saying I'm wrong. It doesn't mean you have to make it to the dais and?
So I was wrong and you have the ability, so thank you for circling that. So does anybody want to make a motion on it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify that I am not allowed to vote. I'm not allowed to nominate anyone. So if you do take a vote, I would say it's a must because we do that after. It's not that I don't support whoever you select. I just get a vote, so thank you.
Anyone have anything?
I have one thing. It's just kind of, you know, we've got Councilmember Walter here, twenty-three years worth of experience. And to be told that he knew he was gonna be leaving, he's gonna leave people hanging is absolutely disrespectful. So I don't think those kind of comments need to be made by councilmen. So please, let's go ahead and show the respect. We're showing respect to everybody out there in the audience. Please reciprocate that. Thank you.
They're gonna get last chance for anyone to make a motion right now. And if they don't want to, it's a survival competition.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward choosing Andres this evening.
We have a first. We have a second. We have a first and we have a second. I'll do a roll call of votes. Alex, do you have a roll call of votes?
And just to clarify, you said choose, I just said that was a motion at that point. So there's a first and a second. Councilmember Walter, concern?
More on the first.
I have to do the roll call by here.
A definite yes.
Councilmember Walter?
I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Councilmember Alaskine?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Hi.
Mayor Lance? No, it passes three-one. Congratulations, Andres. Kevin, anyone who can reach out? Andres, we can make this official and get it set up. So you can go on. Do we do it on the twenty-sixth or do we do it on the first of March?
We should do it on the first evening. It doesn't have to be the council meeting, but so this appointment will be official the day after the resignation, so it would be first first. And you could do that sparingly any time.
So let's do it unofficial in your office or officially in your office, unofficial here at our first meeting. So, this is...
I'd like to thank the council. I accept your nomination. I look forward to serving the city of Cloverdale. Thank you very much.
Anywhere, Andres. Before the afternoon.
I could adjust my resignation to earlier if that sort of loses the mayhem. Is that right now?
You started on the hand.
So, you want? Yeah, let's do that if you don't get it. Your choice, so it would be my choice to have it Tuesday before to the twenty-fifth. So on the twenty-sixth, our meeting will be official this morning. And that is... I can adjust it to February twenty-fifth.
I can do that. I will email the mayor and the city manager an updated resignation letter. I'll get it off to the department.
Thank you, Andres. Thank you everyone for your input on this. This is a simple way of working. I appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to H3 Board of Directors and City Selection Committee appointments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as a part of the Board of Directors and the City Selection Committee, Mayor Lance will be asked to weigh in on the appointments for the regional boards that are attached on the part of the agenda report. Do we do this every time that this comes up? And we typically, we will, if anyone wants to put a pitch in for somebody, we can do that at this point. Or we like to give the mayor a little ad to change his mind when he gets at the meeting tomorrow night, which is the mayor's and council's dinner, which is happening in Santa Rosa. So that's pretty much it. It's, you can see that all the folks that are vying to get on the different positions that are regional boards. And so the mayor will be asked to go on his tomorrow. Thank you, Kevin.
So there's lots of positions. We'll run through each one individually, if you guys don't mind. And then we'll take a vote. Alex, you have each one individually to vote or, and you can do it as opposed to...
We do it either, anyway.
Let's see how it goes at the start. Then we'll send everybody individually. So the first one is the North Bay Division of Lead California City's Executive Board. There's one seat and there's only one person to put in, Jackie Elwood. Everyone will give in supporting her. The next one is going to be, actually, anyone in the public can make a comment on that. Same on Jackie Elwood. All right, we'll move on to Snowman County Act Preservation of Open Space District Citizens Advisory Committee. There's one seat. The letters received, there's four. Karen Now, Marjorie Mortister, Frank Quent, and Alex DeCarle. Obviously, we have our own. I would imagine that we would like to support the board.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see us support our fellow council member, Marjorie Mortister.
Thank you.
And directly develop a report.
So with that, as I always do and as Alex said, and I was the second person in line, or an alternate that I could support, sort of have to abstain in each vote and say, I'd say, but not support that person. Also, if we have a second person after Marjorie, she wasn't the person that's being voted on.
Mr. Mayor, easier way to do that is to just give you the leeway to support anyone else running for that seat. If for some reason Councilmember Mortister is disqualified or decides she doesn't want to run.
If you're all with that.
Well, I just want to say I know Karen, how you pronounce your last name, Now. And she's a very down-to-earth, genuine person. And her family's been in the agricultural community. There's a farmer ranch and there's peas and eggs. And I personally, like, if I don't get chosen, I would like to see Karen get chosen.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments?
Alex DeCarle from Petaluma. I had conversations with some folks today. And he's a big advocate of the dairy farmers out there. Not the corporate dairies, but the actual from the coast end. And how they want to turn some of that into open space. He's got a good handle on that. He's worked closely with them. And I think that I'd like to see Alex DeCarle supported for our first time.
Alex, from Alaskine.
Marjorie, first and foremost. And then I haven't read any background on her, so I'd like to see her.
Open up the color, you know, like any color. Same zone under the puddings. You should have skipped the last item and brought you up first.
Thank you, Mayor, council staff. My name's Alex Carley. I live in the city council. And I am running for Aggie Open Space. I was born and raised out of the country. Very, very familiar with it. My family's background is in coal paint and agriculture. Your generation's back. But, you know, so I know many of the farmers, the landowners, the land streets, all that kind of background here. Making and acting with the space and, you know, friends that are part of salt and molts. And so I'm connected in that way. You know, I also, I spent, I joke with people, but it's true over the summer. I spent more time volunteering information J than on my own campaign. So in the end, I'm lucky that I won because I spent so much time there. But yeah, agriculture and farming and preserving that for generations to come is extremely important. And so, you know, I fully understand that the entire council audience supported Councilwoman Mortister. But, you know, if you do consider an opportunity, I would hope that I could be that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate you. Thanks for coming all the way here.
Should I speak for Mark later? I'm getting to the...
Yeah, that's our next one. Please do.
Hi, my name is Shalina Morada. I am a fifth-generation dairy farmer from Petaluma. I also run two organizations. The first one is Communities for Food and Family Farms, which is working to unite the community with the local farmers and local food supply. We've got restaurants, contractors, lawyers, heavy equipment companies, wineries, Latino groups, and even an archery shop onboard with us. We learned through Measure J that there's a big disconnect between people that...